I'm trying to open the door, my dad's. Never mind, put my coat on.
No.
He's like, oh, you have to leave. I'm like, yes, I told you for the last fifteen minutes I need to go. Broke my driveway. And he keeps yapping. I was like, he was blocking me in.
Oh.
He's blocking me in.
Oh.
It's working.
Box meeting. Yeah. They're both in. Ten minutes early, I'm still here. Right on time.
Yeah, they're all ready? Being at six o'clock, I'm gonna call the December, sorry, sorry. Five o'clock, I'm going to call the December monthly meeting of the school board to order. As everyone rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Good.
However, you.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Kelly. All those in favor?
Hi.
Post. Okay, uh, before we move to the next section, uh, is there anyone that's going to? How many people do we have that want to speak for the comments of the public? If you could raise your hand. This, we have an idea of time allotment. One, two, okay. So. It's part of comments from the public. Just wanted to be known that each commenter is limited to a maximum of five minutes. For the commenter's remarks, the period shall be limited to ten individual speakers. Or extend for thirty actual minutes, whichever limit permits the greater total number of speakers. Each commenter shall be identified by the commenter's name, place of residence. Whether the commenter has a student or students currently enrolled in the district. And or is a staff person in the district. Comments must be directed solely to the board and or its designee and must not address other members of the audience during this part of the meeting. The board during the public comment period will not discuss the agenda issues raised by the public comment commenter. But may discuss such agenda items at the conclusion of the public comment period. All individuals who comment during the public comment period are reminded that the information provided this evening. Is intended to provide. Information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In receiving public comments, the board encourages a commenter to engage in civil discourse. That models character and ethical behavior. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject the individual making such statements. To legal repercussions, including but not limited to defamation claims. Other special procedures for the public comment period not mentioned herein can be found in board policy. That being said, who would like to comment first?
Hi.
You please identify yourself for us.
Wendy Ekman, sixty-seven seventeen Dayton Lake Road, Ambury, Wisconsin. The reason why I am coming to speak to you all. Is is because we have formed a new chapter of an organization called Moms for Liberty. Which is a national organization. And the school district of Siren is included in the Burnett County Moms for Liberty chapter. And I am the newly elected chapter chair. I would just like to introduce myself. And let you know that. Uh, we are here to help parents and citizens. And educators. To empower children and parents in order to secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves. And for our posterity. And to that end, we are a five oh one C four organization. You may be familiar with the Women's Legal Voters. Who address themselves on, that's the kind of organization that we are. That being said, we do endorse. Of school board election participants. So if anybody is interested in securing an endorsement for any vacancy that occurs on the school board. We'd be glad to accommodate you and to discuss some of the issues. Uh, we also hold forums so that people who are running for school board. Or for other local or political office. Can come and air their positions and we can make it open. So the people can become educated as to what their positions are on the various issues. That are dealing with with the community. We're here to be a resource. And um, Moms for Liberty is already of of a member, some of the people are members. Who are in the Siren School District. So we do have membership for with with people who are attending this this school. And as such, Moms for Liberty is a plaintiff. In a lawsuit having to do with the enactment of Title IX in terms of its amendment. And as a result of that, Moms for Liberty is in fact representing Siren School District. In pursuant to that lawsuit. Anyway, if there's any questions that any of you have, we we meet regularly in Webster. On the second Thursday of the month at five o'clock. At Tansons LLC and we welcome everybody who is a member and it can be grandparents, it can be moms, it can be dads. Or can be just concerned citizens and we're here to support you in some of the issues that are presenting yourself.
Thank you, Wendy.
Questions? Again, my name is Wendy Ekman.
Okay.
And um, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Wendy. Who wanted to speak next? Is there anyone else? I thought there was another one. Okay. If there's no more comments from the public. We'll move on to. Special appearances, student achievements, Ryan Carsten.
Um, tonight, um, I brought part of our cross-country team with us. Um, it's the weather and girls' basketball not having practice tonight, not everybody invited to come. But I brought three members of this year's cross-country team, members on this year's cross-country team were Emma Peterson, Sam Andre, Leila Porter, Edie Littner, they were four seniors. With four sophomores, Lucy Peterson, Hannah Reitman, Nico Thrill, and Donna Plaster. Um, Emma, this is Emma, she received, she was on second team all-conference. Hannah Reitman also received second team all-conference and Donna Plaster was honorable mention all-conference. Um. One of the first things they did this year, they won their first meet. Um, the unity meet this year, they placed first overall in the girls' division. And that hasn't happened in Siren in twenty plus years. So that was one of the highlights of their season this year.
That's awesome, ladies, congratulations.
They're so far back, I didn't know, no one can see them. Yeah, come on, up here, so.
Congratulations.
Also, for the next two months for this, I am coaching wrestling in Frederick, so I will not be here, but I'm gonna have band and choir. Do the next two months for student achievement and then I'll be back in. March more. The fall, fall or winter athletics, if that's all right.
But.
I'm the only coach, so it doesn't make sense. I'll have ladies choir here in January and band here March or February.
Awesome, appreciate it, Ryan, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, again, congratulations, ladies.
Wow, girls, keep it up.
All right. Moving on to donations, Knights of Columbus donation.
Um, the night, do you want me to speak on that? The Knights of Columbus came in and and gave this check to Brooke Trickle, our comfort. Um, it's to be used for emergency type situations. We will have that earmarked for that.
That's awesome.
It's wonderful, very helpful.
I'll make a motion to accept the two hundred dollar donation from the Knights of Columbus.
We have a motion from Katie, seconded by Eric to accept the donation, all those in. Favor, I post. Next, treasurer's report for November twenty twenty-four. You have a note.
Yeah, we did look at it at the budget meeting, we are doing some borrowing right now, but some of the money from the grants. Some money from. Aid payment as well, and then tax money should start coming in in January, so that should help. And we also got a check from. Impacted. Impacted, so that's all helping get us a little bit ahead.
That was a nice thing, I'm sure.
So I would make a motion that we bring that we approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Got a motion by Peggy, seconded by Kelly. All those in favor?
Hi.
I post. All right. President's report correspondents don't have much at this time, we're shifting into winter sports, so please get out there and help support the teams. Uh, been seeing some. Teachers have been receiving some accolades, so can't wait to hear about that. Um. And. That's all I got at the moment.
I had a guy at the basketball game I was taking tickets for and he said he hadn't been in the area since the tornado. Had happened, so he came by just after that and he said the building looked beautiful and everything was just really fantastic.
Awesome. Always great to hear that. All right. Reports superintendent.
So I have two articles in there for you and the reason I'm putting these in there, these, this is becoming budget time and they're getting to prepare for the biennial budget for the next cycle. And um, I, this is important because the Association for Equity and Funding was always kind of an organization that was just kind of had a name. But now they have a significant director, John Humphries, who was a superintendent. And I shared that email that he had sent to superintendents indicating what they were doing and they're focusing on the revenue limit. Which is a nice strategy because in the past they would always focus on per pupil aid. So now they kind of got a little craftier and they're trying to increase the revenue limit. And it's really a nice message and it's being heard in the in the Capitol, so that's one of the things that's really important and. This this organization, we are not a member yet, but I think we should now that it's starting to grab some teeth. Uh, so that's one area, the revenue limit, which we're getting a lot of lobbyists and we're getting a lot of attention in the Capitol and legislators are listening to this. Cause it it is important and you can see the message is they want ninety percent of districts funded within ten percent of each other. So that's a good message and the fact that he was the next superintendent as a leader of the organization is really beneficial for us. The second focus that the that our organizations and the superintendent's organizations and the principal organizations are focusing on is special education funding. And that's getting a lot of traction too, uh, within the legislature because of the way they're framing it. They're just trying to propose more money for special ed because it does get factored into the general budget, typically special ed money is transferred from your general fund. So that does help the overall budget if there is special education funding and the fact that special education is rising in many districts, so. That is being heard very well within the Capitol also. So those are the two focus areas by the organization, just and I'll keep you guys up to date as we get moving on this. And what's interesting too though is Quinn is one of our representatives and he's. You know, I've exchanged emails with him and things and he was in favor or was an advocate, at least he said he was, for the the last time the revenue limit increased. And so we did get a bit of an increase on the last one and we were like at ten seven or something, went to like eleven six. So it is impactful and it does help. But it's just a different message and they're focusing on. Instead of just per people aid, they have actual strategies on different areas, they're focusing on revenue limit being one, special education being two. So I just wanted you guys to see that as I continue to get documentation on that, I will share that with you. Um, also, just a note in here though, in the email, it says, so we're at eleven six right now per pupil. And you can see what DPI is proposing twelve three. So that would be the increase there if that were, that's what they're proposing. So. You know, just stay tuned on that, but it is a, it is a good focus, very smart, I think, on behalf of AEF.
This is all good news, hopefully continues in that direction. Thank you, Dr. Shetler. Principals reports.
I'm gonna give James real quick.
Okay.
And essentially, we, today we had the um, ASBAP person in, so got our scores in. Um, juniors, um, did really well, it's kind of interesting how that came through. Um, sports, as you said, are rolling, we have boys' basketball, we have girls' basketball, we have hockey, we have wrestling. So we got lots of things going on, lots of space for people to be, kids are really involved right now and we've got a lot of different kids in a lot of different places. Uh, which is going really well. Um. That's really what we have for that part. And then the next part I was asked to do is my rules and responsibilities. I put that all on paper for you guys and that's the thing, there's no sense in us, you know, reading every single one of those, waste your time. Um, one of the big parts of that though, that I really do want to bring across is. It it seems like an enormous list and I'll be honest with you, every day is so different, it's hard to even figure out what's gonna be next and what's gonna happen from one day to the next, where I'm gonna be. Um, one of the biggest things that in my, in my actual letter part to you, um, it 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 is a um. Very complex position with a lot of different, we wear a lot of different hats. Um, so if some particular thing looks like, wow, does he really do that? Well, that's why it's on there. Um, I'll be honest, I had to go re through, redo it again, um, and Ms. Campbell's will be a little different when she redoes it. We were in the middle of doing it and we lost it all, so she was gone. So scrambling. So um, that's why it's kind of, you know, it is what it is. If you have any questions, I'm always here. Um, give me a call and my phone is always, my door is always open.
Well, I appreciate getting this information because I think one of the biggest issues of a lot of us have is. Who's in charge of what or who do we talk to about these things and. Just getting some of these lists is helping to clarify who we're gonna end up talking to about things or. Who to direct parents to in regards to things, so. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And then also we have today, um, our SEL coach is here to tell you a little bit about how that's working. Um. Natalie Doran here, she was worked in um, the mental health field for years, she's coached. Um, she's also is a private trainer and physical trainer, so she's gonna talk to us about the SEL stuff, if that's all right.
Yep.
Definitely wanted to give an update, so good to meet all of you again, Natalie Doran, so this is a new role. So SEL is social emotional learning. So this is an exciting piece to bring in and I'm so proud that we have a district that is supportive of this and we're seeing more and more of this type of role in different districts. Um, it's really on the rise because we see the importance of being able to support our staff, which means therefore we're supporting and serving our students better. And so I thought I would give an update and kind of how this looks and so I am just in the process right now of finishing up our first, my first coaching cycle. And so with this role, I am able to meet with staff, right now I've had six that I've worked with. To begin this coaching cycle. We decided it was best to maybe meet with the newer staff first, newer teachers, so. I've really kind of put my energy in the beginning and working with teachers who have been, you know, teaching three years or less, working with that staff first. And so with this coaching cycle, what it looks like is I'm meeting with these staff members three times. So that first initial meeting is when I get to connect with them, we're talking about, you know, what's going on in your classroom, how are you feeling? Do you feel supported? You know, what do you need to be better? We know that in education so many burnout easily and so it's nice to be able to be that that connection piece for our our staff and so chatting with them in that initial session and then from there. We do a second session and that where I go into the classroom. And I'm able to observe and watch the kids. And get a sense of how are they doing, how are they feeling? Does it seem like it's a atmosphere where the kids feel like they understand their purpose, they feel included? How does the teacher respond to different situations, we're looking at behavior? And so it's good to get that piece and I'm really, I'm not evaluating the staff, I'm really just kind of looking at. What is the classroom setting like and are we implementing and continuing to implement some of the SEL strategies that have been in place? But also different ways where we can implement new things and new ways to bring some new interventions into the system. So after that second meeting where I'm essentially observing, I then do a third session. Third and final within that coaching cycle and in that third session, it's another one-to-one meeting with that staff member and so it's just a follow-up to talk about the good things, the positive things that I was able to. To observe in the classroom. And again, at that point, just having that discussion, you know, how are you feeling, how are things going, what support do you need? And then just bringing ideas to the table and saying, you know, here's what I saw in your room, this was so good. Have you considered maybe some of these different ideas, some of these different interventions that can help with some of the behavioral issues that happen in the classroom? Um, and sometimes it's simple interventions that we can just do in that moment to bring more calmness to the classroom. To help students to better understand how they're feeling, their emotions. Um, so it's helping the students to build resiliency, but also to better understand where they're at, how they're feeling. I'm going to work through some of those tough situations that they're going through and then for the staff, yes, we're, we're looking at this, how can we help and serve our students, but for the staff. Also, my job and my piece of it is to bring some of that awareness about stress management. You know, we as adults, we know what it's like, we have a lot going on in our lives and so. I'm just bringing forward some of those stress management techniques and strategies that we can also do and work through as adults and as staff members, so. It's a three appointment, we'll say, piece to this coaching cycle that we do and then after that cycle's complete, I do regular check-ins. So now going into January, I'll begin that second coaching cycle with now different teachers and we're gonna start to. To chat and meet with some of the veteran teachers, which is great because it's not just for the newer teachers. I am looking at some of these staff members that we have who are fantastic and who already implement a lot of SEL. And so now I can take some ideas that they're already using in the classroom and say, okay, I can pull these ideas and share them with the staff and with the teachers and our new teachers. So we can kind of work collectively as a cohesive group as well to continue to implement and bring forward these ideas, so. It's a positive, positive, necessary role. I'm just thrilled to be a part of this and so. Initially, meeting with those six staff members, the takeaway really has been, they appreciate the support that they have. There are certainly things that they want to to suggest, right? And so I give them that opportunity to just be anonymously where I will then just say, okay, I can go to the administration and say. Here's some things I think we can work on, you know, here's some ideas and so they can feel comfortable sharing with me and then I will just of course follow up on on those needs that they've brought forward to me, so. Trying to make it more of a partnership with the teachers and and bringing these new implementations forward to to the staff, so. Little by little, the goal is that each classroom will start to implement more SEL interventions and strategies. And that's really the the objective with all of this, so thank you for your support with all of this and certainly I can answer any questions as well.
I think it's great, um. And it's good that we're utilizing it and not just. Doing it and leaving it as it is and doing these check-ins and whatnot. Hopefully down the road, um, we can compile more information in regards to. Uh, reoccurring issues that might not be simply solved just by, you know, strategy wise, um. That we could potentially lend our support to the administration to uh. Fix or take care of. But. Look forward to hearing more about it.
Good, thank you. And I think that's the goal as well, yeah, collecting those pieces and have that data. So they move through the process, thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Anyone else have any questions for Natalie? Okay. Uh, moving on, this is Herman.
Um, starting with staff shout-outs, I wanted to give a shout-out to Kathy Kobal on her National Board Certification. Um, she happens to be here tonight. Kathy has completed her second round of National Board Certification, which is completed every ten years. Uh, for redoing a license, it's a very in-depth process of video action reflecting on your teaching practices. And then putting it all together to be reviewed. Uh, the wait is very long, seven months, you waited to find out if you passed. Do you have any other comments? Any other comments you'd like to make?
No, I just, I really appreciated the support I had from fellow staff movers, from parents, I had to have. Every, every family member sign that I had in my videos. Um, staff admin answering questions. Everything left to do was fine to come by everybody, so I really, really appreciate all of that. I couldn't have done it without everybody else.
Congratulations, super proud of you. My other shout-out is to Beth Peterson and Bernie Anderson. Um, our elementary concert was wonderful this year. Um, it just seemed like the students enjoyed themselves up there, they were having fun with the music that was chosen. Um. Ms. Peterson and Miss A were just so positive and so complimentary of the students who were out there and. You know, I I just felt that Beth really took. All that was happening at the first one with the result and and, you know, made some funny comments as to. Um, having maybe new stars in our future or something, so. I I thought it was a beautiful concert and I just wanted to give them a staff shout-out.
Awesome.
And then Act Twenty. So you heard me talk randomly here about Act Twenty, every couple of months I come at you with it. Um, so next month starts our cycle of assessments. Um, so we're revising the assessment schedule to accommodate all of the state deadlines that we have to adhere to. Um, we've created a handout for educating parents on what Act Twenty is and that went out with parents at the first conference. And just understanding what Act Twenty is and what that means for their student and what what that means to come in the upcoming months here. And then I wanted to give a huge shout-out here to Becky Wickland and Danielle Formanak for their extensive work and research. With all things relating to Act Twenty, this is a lot of extra work on Becky and Danielle. On their plates and I couldn't do this without them, they've really been amazing through all of this.
Awesome.
Questions?
Okay. Thank you. All right, reports, special education directors.
So. Gearing up for spring state assessments, um, we have two students that will be taking our diagnostic learning maps. Um, this is our alternate assessment for our most severely disabled students. Um, their PNP's are professional needs, personal needs profiles. And their accommodations info will be entered when we get back from break. Hopefully everything gets approved and testing will begin mid-March for that. Um, and. Um and for our grades three through eight. And nine and ten for the pre-A C T, I'm pulling together all of their student accommodations. Specialized five oh four, so that when that window opens, we can get all those accommodations in and approve.
Excellent. Any questions? Moving on. Uh Indian Education Report.
So last Friday, I think Friday, the thirteenth anyway, um I took eight students to um. A Health Career Exploration Day for Native youth, um so the tribe has been. Um working with the Education Department out of the tribe to kind of see what they need. In terms of jobs, in terms of training, um. So the tribal education department is working with Northwood Tech and they put on a wonderful day, so we had four different schools there. Um mostly focusing on juniors and seniors. We got to um do rotations and actually check out what they have in this training center and. I was kind of like super excited about it, they have like this giant six-foot table with um an actual like cadaver on it. That is touchscreen, so you can do the different layers of it, it was so exciting. The kids got to um see what it would be like to ambulate a patient, so. I had to be a patient, I got to lay in the hospital bed, they had to put a gate belt on me and get me up and walk me around. Um they got to explore some of the like mannequins that they have at Northwood Tech and they are so realistic, um. You can check pulses, you know, different pulse points, they could listen to the lung sounds. So it was really exciting for the kids and I hope that they continue to do this, um it was the first time, so I think they wanted to keep the numbers. But it was really engaging for the kids, it was one of the best, um. Um and then Tanya is working on Language Fridays, she's trying to um get into classrooms and s- um. Focus specifically on Moja Boy language, she has offered um. If teachers, um if staff wants to come in and learn some Moja Boy with her, so she's here fully under the language grant. Every Friday, so it used to be that um Friday was ready, yeah, but now we have her all week.
Thank you. All right, now I'm looking for a motion to approve the. Regular school board meeting minutes for November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Motion from Kelly, seconded by Eric, all those in favor? I post on to new business overview of hiring protocols.
Okay, so in your uh packet, you saw, we have a general policy five thirty-three that talks about recruitment, um that was in our. Um policy forum, um but uh. Policy committee suggested that we come up with a formal um process and to be used in all areas. Um I found a template, we worked through it, uh got some uh input from administration on that. Took it to policy last evening and I'll let you guys comment if you want to, but wanted to share as an informational item with the board this evening. Um I did model this off another district, so it is something that, you know, has been used and um my understanding was. Uh back in when when this was unionizing, we had a formal union, but union before Act Ten, there were. Some guidelines and things like that that were in the um teacher handbook, I have not seen those, um. But this this process here probably resembles some of that and then um. It's much more streamlined than probably we've done in the past, if everybody's doing it and we're doing it consistently, so everybody's doing the same thing, so. I don't know, policy number.
Yeah, it's spelled out a lot more in here.
Yeah.
And we discussed last night that we would use it all the way across the board, so. Even for coaching staff, it would be the same. The same way, so any type of staff that would be hired here would go through the same, the same policy that's used for everyone.
And it's just a way to make sure that everyone is following it the same, cause there was some question as this does here and that does there and.
And we wanna limit bias.
Yeah.
Sometimes there can be bias, you know, part of the problem is, you know, we do send emails internally and that and I think. If that's not spelled out, some people might consider, you know, that's typically been the process, is give in-house individuals the opportunity first, so. That could be something that come, could come in question if you're not familiar with the process, I suppose.
So I would make a motion to adopt this as our policy for. For a new policy for hiring practices.
I don't know, it's really a policy.
Offer it as information or.
How do we do that?
Yeah.
It's a new.
If it's an overview, it's not a policy.
Not a policy, but it's new, um.
I mean, you can adopt the process, I mean, we'll follow the process, just so, you know, you get it in the minutes.
Yeah, I think we should do that, just to.
Needs to be, right, it needs to be.
Then we approve of the how it's being handled.
So a motion to adopt the process?
That'll work.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the process of hiring practices.
I'll second that. A motion by Kelly, seconded by myself, all those in favor? I opposed.
Can I ask a question about policy five five three, that's already been a current policy.
Yes, correct.
Where's, there's just on the bottom, there's not an adoption date, so that's why I was just asking, cause not the time we have an adoption date. I was just checking that, it is.
Nine four thirteen.
Plus the date that it was.
Yeah, so what happened is this comes.
That adoption date, there's usually.
This comes from the School Board Association with the date originated, yeah, and that might have been an oversight on. On our part, on my part, yeah, cause when this first thing all started, I was, I did this by myself, I didn't have anybody doing it, so I may have missed that.
Right, cause we usually on that adoption date, right?
So we should just go back and find the date.
Yep.
And that may be in the, the date.
It should be a minute.
Right. May not have added to policy, yeah, that's, I'm sure that's on me.
No, I was just double checking just to make sure that that was already a policy, might save more time for my own knowledge. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the M three slash Liberty Mutual Insurance Renewal.
So this is our liability and property renewal, um I did take this to um. Budget and Finance the other evening, um we were anticipating a thirty percent rate increase uh based on what our um. Provider was telling us, uh came in at thirteen point seven percent and that does include the um. Standard loan cyber liability coverage that we switched from the, from under the liability umbrella, um. The reason for doing that was because um basically there's enhanced sub-limits and coverages within the new one. So when this came up several years or last year when we did our renewal, we just left the the one that was in there uh offered by. Uh Liberty Mutual, this is offered by Beasley, a different company, it's a standalone. But what's happening is at that point in time, there weren't as many cyber attacks or. Uh things that were happening within school districts, but that has increased since that time and. They're recommending this policy, several other districts use Beasley because it has more extended coverage. And we were very happy um with the thirteen point seven percent increase as opposed to thirty with the coverage being equal. So we wanna jump on that as quick as we can before.
I'll make a motion to accept the Liberty Mutual Insurance Renewal.
Yeah, motion by Katie, seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
I.
I post. Referendum loan options.
So this was um for our referendum that we uh, there was approved for the the roof and the boiler. And there were several options that the chair would budget and finance in there, um one of them was a. A twenty-year loan at six percent um to be uh through the state trust fund that would be, could be refinanced if the rate were to change. We've had several state trust fund loans in the past, they're very flexible, um they're, they're very good loans, uh the interest rate's a little higher. Uh the other option then was um Community Bank at five point two five percent. Um that would be a ten-year loan to refinance to the final ten, so those were the several options that that the. The board has to to look into tonight, Peggy, do you wanna speak to it as the chair or Tom?
Well, I can say, we did look at it, I would say with. Uh from experience, we generally do not leave a twenty-year loan anywhere for twenty years, we would normally refinance that somewhere through there anyway. So the fact that they would wanna relook it in ten years to me is not really a concern. Um I personally would make a motion that we accept the Community Bank offer at the lower interest rate for the first ten years.
I was saying.
It kinda came out at the same time, uh so we'll go with Peggy making the motion to accept the Community Bank route. Um and Kelly's seconding it. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. All right. Bids for playground.
All right, so they were very pleased that we got uh multiple bids back, um quite a variety of uh costs, starting down at. Two hundred and eighty up to five hundred and ninety-five for just the construction portion. Six hundred is the total that we have to spend, um. Rettler had not heard of stout construction before, so they wanted to make sure to reach out to them and talk to them directly. Uh their general contractor had come over from John, Market and Johnson. Um so he has experience in many large projects, after talking with them, he felt those numbers were very secure. And he would definitely be okay going with stout, uh the second bid on there uh from McCabe. Um that's a company that they've worked with for quite a long while, so he's very secure in in that one, knowing those people. Um but after reaching out to stout, he said he had no uh reservations about it. So either of those options would lead us to be under budget of under that six hundred. Um when we add in the Lee Construction, the Lee Recreation, which is the actual playground equipment portion. Um plus a contingency of five percent, so the lowest bid right now is sitting at uh five twenty-five, six. Um and the next hire would be like another thirty thousand if we went with the McCabe. So. We just have to decide which construction bid we wanna go with and then. And approve Lee Recreation as the playground equipment provider and then both of those bids will be signed by the end of the year. And we will be on to the next phases of finding that construction date.
We need two motions.
Uh yeah, I suppose.
So, I'm clear with this, like all of these bids are including all the stormwater issues.
Yes, all of those pieces will put out as part of the bid.
I just wanna make sure we don't have. We do not have any water.
Rettler was comfortable with stout and um on page three, you'll see there's like the the bid of two hundred and fifty-four and then there's the twenty-five. Um that twenty-five is doing some additional blacktop work that we could. Potentially pull back from if needed, um and that blacktop would just get replaced at a later date when we're doing around the corner, basically.
Kind of just as a contingency if something else went wrong.
Correct, correct, but we still.
We plan to do it.
We plan to do it, yep, uh we have a five percent contingency in there and we're still, you know, almost seventy-five under budget anyway. So I feel like we've got a really nice bubble um as we go through things and uh see what potentially happens, but. I think it was good that we waited on those, getting those construction bids for sure.
So you want one bid for the construction and one bid for the equipment, is that correct, you want one motion for each?
I think that would be the best way to make sure.
Make a motion that we accept, we go with stout construction.
I'll second that. Got a motion by Peggy, seconded by myself to go with the stout construction bid, all those in favor? I opposed.
And then I'll make the uh motion that we accept Lee Recreation's playground bid, one hundred and eighty-two, seven.
I'll second.
Nine eight.
We got a motion by Katie, seconded by Jamie. To accept the Lee Playground Equipment Bid, all those in favor? I opposed. All right.
I have one more question, that's just so unclear, were we not able to get the, was it National Guard?
Yes, so the National Guard piece, um. Chase basically said if it wasn't part of this bid now. That it's hard to go back on with the company once we've accepted the bid and the timing and the last that we left it. Was this project was too small for them and we would have needed to coordinate with other projects to be in the area. Um I and I, I already talked to Jill about it too, I probably could have done a lot more in trying to follow up and making that happen over the course of the summer and I did not. So I will accept responsibility on that, um but hopefully there's something else that we can work with them in the future if we can. You know, put those larger projects together across the the county.
And they do generally require a pretty large.
Yeah.
Right.
It's expensive, so.
Right. Yep.
All right, thank you Katie, appreciate it. All right, now on to the wonderful part of calendars, so. Let's be looking at budget, finance and personnel.
Budget's good for me.
Budget's good for you from Monday the twentieth?
Yep, that's fine with me.
Okay, so we'll go with Monday the twentieth at four fifteen P M.
Um if I have a conflict that week, can I zoom in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, not that I can't be here, but I may not be able to be, if I can, I can, I probably can zoom.
Yeah, that's fine. Um Buildings, Grounds and Transportation.
Was there a particular reason we made that? Okay, tell me more.
So um we need to have a special meeting, so we need, we need uh buildings that day, I mean, we're just, we're, we're coupling it. Because we have to finalize the bids for the roof, the lawn and the boiler.
Okay, and it does work for me.
And we're gonna need a special meeting by the, by the majority that, I think that night too, right, you don't know?
We're just going with that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the committee.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
The committee can approve it, so.
Okay.
So nine eight hours.
Do you know Steve coming in? Couldn't hear you. Steve, you'll have to check to see that's.
Right.
Steve, he's not here, he's on that committee.
If he can't make it, I can step in if we need to.
Yeah, I can't make that many.
Yeah, cause we'll be opening bid.
All right, well, yeah, cause we gotta get those taken care of. So if it's good for you two.
Yep.
All right. Policy planning and curriculum.
We do have items, I don't know what we just wanna use for a date.
Okay. Um. Kelly, Jamie, any nights, dates that particularly don't work for you?
Um it has to be, the earliest I can do now is five thirty.
Okay.
Wednesdays work better for me.
Wednesday? Does Wednesday work for you?
Or Monday the thirteen, just the other day, it's like Thursday games.
What week are you looking at?
Uh like the thirteenth to the fifteenth or the twenty-second? Whatever's open on this calendar that doesn't have a bunch of stuff.
That's, yeah, accurate.
Did you say Mondays? I said Monday the thirteenth or the two, Wednesday the fifteenth or twenty-second, I don't know, do one of those not?
I can, I can do Monday the thirteenth at five thirty.
Okay.
At five thirty?
Yes.
So with you, that being said, Kelly, are we gonna need to change our regular meeting then too? From five, can we do that or do we have to do that at the, at the yearly?
No, we just had to set a date, I don't think it's at the time at the annual meeting, only set it.
Right.
The date.
Okay.
I asked about it, Danny, you.
Yeah.
You want to do, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so. Policy planning curriculum, Monday the thirteenth at five thirty P M, regular school board meeting. Yes. And you prefer five thirty?
I can use five thirty. Or I can come late, it doesn't matter, whatever you guys want.
What works for you all?
I can do either.
Can you do either?
I can do it.
Okay, we'll, we'll set it for five thirty then, all good.
Peggy, you're not leaving, that's right, you're kicking your screen.
All right, so.
Change.
Now moving on to approve the bills.
We'll make a motion to approve the bill cycle for November, November through December eighteenth.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
A motion by Katie, seconded by Peggy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Uh, it was reported, signature. And, and looking for a motion at this time to con vote, uh, to convene in the closed session under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five one C E F and G to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Considerations of financial, medical, social or personal information and to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice. A motion by Kelly, seconded by Eric.
Did you get that?
He's not here, so Jamie, take the roll.
Kelly?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Peggy?
Yes.
Jamie?
I didn't know if you had.
Yeah.
I don't think I said yes, yes.
No, you didn't.
You did.
There's words in here.
It's just automatic, it just pops right out.
And they don't always match up for.
Second.